Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
I found the phone.
Oh, God, that's so fun.
Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Mr. Chairman.
Here. We will be having a vote for the election of the Chair of the Board of Commissioners. This will be handled by Mr. Tom Kavanaugh, County Clerk.
Good morning, all, and Happy New Year. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the Legislative Chamber. And if you would like to have the Pledge of Allegiance now before the vote?
Sure.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now proceed to the election of the Chair of the Board of Commissioners for 2013. Nominations are open for...
I nominate Marianne Borgeson for Chair.
And I would like to nominate Commissioner Mark Kraft.
And may I second my own?
That's okay.
As in previous years, we, if you so desire, have ballots that you could cast, which I will hand out now.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Borgeson. Five votes for Commissioner Borgeson, two votes for Commissioner Kraft. Congratulations, Commissioner Borgeson, for Chair.
Mr. Clerk, I would like to change my vote to reflect that I am voting for Commissioner Borgeson.
Let the record show that the vote for Commissioner Borgeson as the Chair for the year 2013 is unanimous.
Thank you, Board members, and I look for a very productive year, a challenging year, but a fun year because of a lot of transition and change that's happening within our own office. And thank you for your confidence in me. And with that, we will move on to the election of Vice Chair for the Board of Commissioners for next this year, and I would nominate Commissioner Tusha.
And I would nominate Commissioner Kraft. Give me a second.
Five votes for Commissioner Tusha, two votes for Commissioner Kraft.
Thank you.
While congratulating Commissioner Tusha, I would also like to shift my vote to reflect a vote for Commissioner Tusha for the Vice Chairmanship.
Let the record show that the vote for Commissioner Tusha as Vice Chair of the County Board for 2013 is unanimous.
Thank you. We will move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, December 11th, 2012, and Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, January 15th, 2013, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property.
Motion passes.
Item C, citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. The first one is Item D, sale of exempt property to exempt entity. Roger or Mike, do you want to fill us in?
Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor's Office. Essentially, what you had in this was a church that was used as a church that was subsequently sold to another entity that intends to use it as a church, and statutorily, there's the requirement that the purchasing entity file an exemption application and that it be approved by the Board, and we're recommending approval.
And the church we're talking about is down on, is this the 40th and Q one?
Yes, it is. Iglesia Luterana Jesus.
Any questions or comments?
Motion passes.
Item E, resolution 2012, personal property permissive exemptions. These are being denied on agenda for denial.
These were late filers.
Were they exempt prior to this?
No, they both are new, actually.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of Item E?
Motion passes.
Resolution F, approving corrections for errors in assessment in personal property. There's just a listing, all of your CACs. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion passes.
And last resolution, Item G, approving the application for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the County Treasurer.
Motion passes.
We have one protest. Item H, real property value determination for Jocelyn Castle property. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, and congratulations on your election.
Thank you.
And Madam Vice Chair as well. Commissioners, David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm, appearing before you today pro bono in my capacity as a longtime Board Member and immediate past President of the Board of the Jocelyn Castle Trust, which is the nonprofit entity that now owns and operates, restores, and maintains all lovingly the Jocelyn Castle property located at 39th and Davenport Streets here in Omaha. Here before you today protesting the proposed valuation of the Carriage House portion of the property, which is the only portion of the property that is claimed not to be exempt from taxation, and we agree with that designation, and the reason for that is because we do lease that property or part of that property to for-profit entities. The proceeds of those leases are all used for the nonprofit purposes of the trust. The assessor had proposed a value of about $323,000. Our proposed value is $97,297, and that proposed valuation on our part is based on our actual lease experience. We tried for a couple of years, as I said, I've been on the Board for a long time, about five, six years now, we tried for a couple of years hiring the loan company first and then Investors Realty, or maybe in the reverse order, two of the most prominent commercial realty firms in town, to lease that property for about $6,500 a month. We were unsuccessful in doing that. Today, we leased the property kind of piecemeal. We have three tenants in there, one of whom is a nonprofit in the basement, for about $3,500 a month. The assessor's proposed valuation is based on some comparables that they have that are about $13, $15, and $1,750 a month. As you can see, our numbers of seven or eight dollars square foot versus their numbers, they're about double our numbers. Our actual experience, therefore, in what we can lease this property for is quite different than the assessor's comparables and belies their estimate of the value. This is a very difficult space to find comparables for. I understand the assessor's methodology, and they have to engage in mass appraisal methodology per statute. This is a very different space, though, even from typical Class C office space. This is the former stable, in fact. That's why it's called the Carriage House. The second floor is where the stable hands lived. The second floor space is not full height space in many parts of it, so even as office space, it's very unique. The ground floor space is the nicest space, but that's largely one big open room with a second smaller room. The basement is a basement. It's not the nicest space. You have to go through some of the first floor space to get to the second floor space, et cetera. In addition, there are significant expenses in maintaining and restoring this space. It's not a new building. It's over 100 years old. There was a lot of deferred maintenance on the building from when the state of Nebraska owned it as well. So, all of that to say that we believe that the value should be much lower than the assessor's value. We use the assessor's methodology or the methodology and the capitalization rate that they recommend on their website to arrive at our proposed valuation of $97,297. At the assessor's proposed valuation, the tax bill alone will constitute half to two-thirds of what we make renting the property. That ratio alone shows you that something is out of whack here. With our proposed valuation, the tax bill would constitute somewhere in the neighborhood of about a sixth of what we ultimately make renting the property. That seems like a much more reasonable ratio than your taxes costing you half of what you can make on the property. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and I appreciate your time today.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Morgan?
How many square feet or per floor?
Per floor.
Yes.
It differs.
Let's take the ground floor, not the basement.
The ground floor, the actual number is total square feet, about 2,400.
Okay. So the upstairs, top floor, would be probably the same?
No, the top floor is 1,829.
All right.
And the basement is about 1,900.
And your total net rent last year was, or the year before, whatever, if you don't mind me asking?
Sure. $37,800. Well, no, I'm sorry, that's gross. The net rent was $13,500.
Now, when you said 37, which I like that number.
That's the gross.
That's the gross?
Right.
And the expenses are running 65 percent, thereabouts?
The building is not in good shape, so we've had to do some what you'd probably call capital improvements, but there's annual ongoing maintenance on the roof, the HVAC system, water leaks, all of those kind of things are fairly constant with a building like that, unfortunately.
So the net is $13,000?
Correct.
So actually, that would be about a 14 cap. Mr. Goodwilly, am I right?
I'm not that quick with figures, but that's...
Me either.
Come on, Paul.
In coming to our number, we used a 9.25 cap, which is what is listed on the assessor's website as for Class C office space.
Yes, if it was 9.25, it'd be somewhere around the...
Be about $130.
$8,000 or something. I mean, if it was valued at $100,000 or $97,000. I'll let Mr. Goodwilly comment.
Well, I'm not going to. Actually, I'm going to invite Chris Musto, the referee for the county that reviewed the protest and made some recommendations up to elaborate on his review of the protest.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Musto.
Good morning.
Question?
Do you want to just go through your process of how you arrived at what you arrived at for value?
Certainly. I was forwarded the information, which included pretty much typical when we're looking at a property, the packet prepared by the Douglas County Assessor's Office, along with the information that was submitted by the protester. And I did take a look at that, and certainly there were some questions that might have been raised that if we were sitting down face to face, we could have discussion, but when I went through it, they gave me some actual lease information. However, working through that becomes a lease fee value rather than a market value. Now, the question that I had, the assessor did provide a couple rental comparables that seemed reasonable for the type of property, older buildings, not necessarily the exact location, but looking at that, and so probably the big difference that I came up with is, you know, I saw the rental is probably slightly higher than their actual rent was that they were getting. Now, I'm not disputing that that's not what they're getting, and maybe they did market it, but that wasn't prepared in their protest, that I could see that or understand that it had been actively marketed for a period of time with no luck. Now, the information on the expenses that they provided, there was no detail, so again, I couldn't look at it to decide whether there were any capital items that maybe shouldn't have been included on that year-to-year basis. But I did also see how they were talking about the rental and wanting to exclude the rental of the nonprofit, yet they were rolling all the expenses in from the entire Carriage House property, which would seem to me would understate their income to the profit portion of the property. You know, I looked over everything that was provided. It didn't seem that the assessor's methodology was unreasonable, assuming they can get the approximately $16 rent that we were talking about, and that would seem to be on a full-service gross basis, which it appears, again, I didn't see the leases, but at $8.20, 77.35 a square foot, I would think that that would be, at that rate, would maybe be a triple net rent rather than a gross, but I could stand corrected there. And so the pieces that were there made available seemed reasonable. I did also look at the information the assessor provided on equalization. Now, the protest had marked that they were going to give some equalization information, but it wasn't in the file, or I didn't find it. And also, it seemed that it did kind of tie together and seem reasonable on that aspect of it. And these are just the pieces of information that I can pull up that's available, public record. I have not a way to confirm this, but it did place a value through the transfer statement on record there of $1,415,599. That was at the point of transfer for the entire property. I don't know where that number came from, whether that was third-party appraisal or just set there, but looking at that and establishing that amongst the property, using the above building area as set by the assessor, worked out to about $66.42 a square foot, which applied to the Carriage House, came to 334. So through two or three different processes, I seemed to support what the assessor had of record, but I will say that what I was provided through the protester was somewhat limited, rather than detailed lease information, be able to study that or expenses, to be able to look at that. It wasn't available at this time.
So with that information, we may be arriving at a different value. Is there, I guess this would be the Board's decision, an opportunity to give you one more week to look at that information that was brought forward this morning and then come back next week with any changes?
Well, the numbers that I looked at based on that sale price and the equalization actually came up at or slightly above where the assessor is. I'd be more than happy to look at additional information if you'd like that to be presented to me.
Okay. Commissioner Boyle?
Chris, I appreciate the analysis you put together. I have some questions, a lot of questions that are popping up. First of all, kind of going backward, you mentioned that the property was purchased for $1 million plus?
It was indicated by the 521 of $1,415,599.
Okay. Do you remember who the seller was? Was it the state of Nebraska?
If you allow me to look at the transfer statement here, I do have it available. State of Nebraska, yes.
Okay. Well, I guess the first suggestion I'd like to make is that that probably, I doubt that was an arm's length transaction. I, at one point, represented the state of Nebraska and some repairs on that building, and we had to do repairs to the roof, and it was, you know, quite a project, and I became relatively familiar with the building, having been in it other times, but also because of my then-relationship with it. And I don't really think that's probably, you know, a price that was put on by, if I could say it this way tactfully, professionals. And I'm not sure, because the condition that it was in, I doubt would have brought anything like that if they had put it up for sale and put a Morgan Realty sign out front, and Mr. Morgan was able to sell it, although he would be very capable. I'm getting myself in trouble here. But I just don't think that's the price. So, knowing the condition of the building, that's my opinion, and that's, you know what that's worth. So, anyway, that's my opinion. I'm curious, too, when you said that, you said something about, so I don't really think the price, the $1 million is really that relevant. I'm not sure that was factored in. I think the state saw somebody wanted to buy it, they wanted to get rid of it, and that's the deal. So, I'm not sure that the price was even, I suspect it was too high. The other thing is that you mentioned that the expenses of the Carriage House, I think you said this, are all applied to the Carriage House, and I would respectfully ask, well, where else would you apply them? I mean, would you move that over to the main mansion, that you'd transfer those expenses over there, or don't they have their own? So, I mean, why would you suggest that all the expenses that are run up by the Carriage House shouldn't be paid for out of revenue coming from the Carriage House?
Okay. The clarification there is, is part of that Carriage House lease is a nonprofit, so they don't want to include that income as part of the income which you would create value from, yet you're expensing, you're expensing the entire property, including that. So the nonprofit is what I'm saying, even though they're paying a small lease amount, they ought to be paying at least their expenses that are appropriate. It wouldn't be proper for somebody not related to the nonprofit to be carrying the expenses of the rest of the property on a valuation theory.
Okay. You mentioned comparables. Can you tell us what comparables were used in arriving at this value?
The assessor's office used a comparable at 3615 Dodge Street, 4641 Dodge Street, and 3737 Dodge Street.
I'd like to suggest something a little bit more in the neighborhood, maybe going to 40th and Farnham and 40th and Coming, just down the, you know, if during this interim and during this week, if you have time, I'd like you to look at what happens at 40th and Coming on rents. I know that there's a, I believe there's a new nonprofit, actually, in one of those buildings near the bakery or near that restaurant there.
Okay, these weren't rents. These were their comparables for equalization.
Okay.
Now, their rents happen to be the property at 119 South 49th Street and 3861 Farnham Street.
Well, I...
And one more at 144 South 39th Street.
Okay. I'm very familiar with the neighborhood, and I doubt that 119 South 49th would even be near, or should be considered because of its close proximity to Dundee and so forth, but, and 38 certainly could be, but I really would like you to look at 40th and Farnham and 40th and Coming. I think that's more in line. I mean, it's right, literally, down the block.
Okay. My position is supposed to be reviewing the information that's submitted to me from the assessor's office and the property owner. Do you want me to go out and independently gather information and create a new analysis?
I would, I don't know that I want all that, but I want something that, I want some kind of comparability that's comparable. I don't think that, I think 40th and Farnham, as to valuation of buildings and rents, and 40th and Coming valuation and rents is closer to where we ought to be with Jocelyn, even though it's a beautiful building, but I just think that's closer for what the market is. And I don't think 49th Street is close enough, and I don't know who chose those. If it was the assessor, then I'd like to ask the assessor to do this, and it'd probably be better that they do, since they're already on the clock. Nothing personal, but...
I understand.
Those are some of my concerns. I think, also, you know, I mean, and then Mr. Levy mentioned that he had contacted, and I didn't write it down fast enough, but that there had been an attempt by commercial... and I didn't write it down fast enough, but that there had been an attempt by commercial, maybe this is not addressed to you, Chris, but, commercial real estate companies had tried to rent the space and were not successful. I'd like the, maybe I'm speaking to the assessor here, I'd like the assessor to find out just exactly, what were they offering that space for rent at what price? And, you know, what amenities came with it? It would be, it would be very helpful to me, anyway. I think, I'm interested in seeing this, the Jocelyn operation survive, and I want to see them, you know, and everybody does, and I want to see them really do well. And I think we need to be really very curious about how all these things are coming together and work it to their benefit. Because the building apparently, I'm not familiar with who's in there, but the building is apparently rented, and it's surviving, and I'd like to see that continue. So, and I know everybody's on that same page. So if we can find some other way to justify a lower valuation, that's what I'd be looking for, frankly.
Commissioner Morgan?
Okay. Couple of things, Dave. One is, you know, I'd suggest you look at, do you have a lease right now for the next three or four years or five years?
We, the time periods vary, but yes, we do have leases right now. One, the longest goes out three years, we just renewed it.
And what I would have suggested you do is lease it on a triple-net basis, so that if I'm the tenant, and that's the way a lot of buildings are leased, I'm paying all the expenses, I'm paying my own utilities, I'm paying the grounds, maintenance, and so on. And I think what you were asking Commissioner Boyle was, that the expenses for all of the grounds are being charged to the carriage house, which would be bringing up those expenses. So you want to say, hey, the area around just the carriage house, let's get that ground as charged to that, but the rest of it for the nonprofit.
And just to clarify, the expenses that we've reported here as part of this discussion are for the carriage house only.
Okay.
The carriage house is not separately metered, so I hear what you're saying regarding setting it up as a triple-net. There are some challenges with that, but I hear what you're saying.
And what might be best to do, and I just, you know, I'll be glad to give you some, you know, suggestions, I'd think about separate metering it. If you leased it to someone at $4 a foot, which would be a very low rent, triple-net, that would bring in somewhere around $16,000 a year. People know, and Bill Bowers happens to know real estate very well, that if you've got a building that brings in $16,000, it's very easy, in these times, to sell it in a good location, which your building is in a good location, for $160,000 fairly quickly, because that's a 10 cap rate, and people are buying buildings at an eight, nine cap, you know, they have a lease for the next five years, that sort of thing. So I'd look at converting it that way, and it'll help you. And, you know, we don't want to belabor this thing. I think what we should do is gather more information, look at the lease, and if we grant this at this time to keep it the way it is, and then come back next year and get more information rather than continue on, it might be the best solution. We appreciate what you contribute to the community as a nice, special historic piece of property. That would be kind of my suggestion, and that we look at this in a year and gather more information rather than delaying it. And then, I'd be glad, I don't want to be interfering or have a conflict of, you know, getting involved in the real estate, but I think working on a triple-net, it should lease in a heartbeat for somewhere around $5, $6. Bill Bowers is an excellent leasing agent, he'd tell you that too. So it's something to think about.
Thank you.
Commissioner Duda?
I don't know what more information we're asking people to go out for. I mean, the assessor's office has told us what they believe it's worth, the owners have refuted that. We asked our referee, who is, we hired to be impartial on all this, he has come in and given us his opinion, for us to go back and say, okay, get some more information and redo things and come back until we get an answer we like. I don't think it's in anybody's best interest. I believe that the assessor's office has made their case, to me, a gross rent of almost $38,000, and then say, but the building, you know, the building's only worth $97,000. That doesn't validate that the building is only worth $97,000 to me. I believe that the assessor's case is made here, and I would move to uphold the assessor's recommendation.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I'm not, I'm not satisfied that we have good comparables. I mean, just looking through here, we've got, you know, a building at 3861 Farnham that's, I mean, right on the street, it's a beautiful kind of colonial-style building. We've got the former synagogue over at 119 South 49th Avenue. I mean, those are not comparable. And then you start, I mean, they don't even look, I mean, they're just, then the building, the real estate company at whatever it is now, at 38th and Dodge, and then there's this beautiful professional, I guess it's a, I don't know if it's a dental office or what it is, on Dodge Street. I mean, they're just, I don't know. That's why I say, I think if you go to old buildings, go to 40th and Farnham, go to 40th and Coming, and look at those, that those are comparable. They're not even actually comparable, but they're getting closer to comparable. I mean, they're old buildings, they need repairs, I would suspect with all due respect to the owners there. I mean, they're not, you know, they're just old buildings that are being used very well, and that's what this is. I don't think the comparables are correct, myself. I just, in looking at them, they just, this doesn't add up, and I don't know. That's where I think we need to take a look at. And I would support what Commissioner Morgan is suggesting. I'm a little mixed up on, are you saying we should increase the valuation for a year, or we should leave it as it is, or what should we do?
I would tend to think that we ought to leave it as it is for the year and get some information. The other thing is, as far as sale prices, I think we ought to be looking at this, and that should be the heavier-weighted opinion, as far as the value, would be the income approach on this property. You know, that has a lot to do with it, unless it's a, some favorable lease to someone, and I'm sure it is not. But I'd look at that, and then we can, and I'd be glad to go with the assessor at some point in a few months, to take a look at the property and then come back next year. And I think the income approach is much better on this piece of property, and then to let Mr. Goodwilly or yourself state what you think on that, because that's what we should be looking at. Mr. Goodwilly, what's your opinion?
Well, our 323 initially was based on income approach. So yeah, we're in agreement.
Yeah. And I think we ought to get more information on the income, let it stay as it is for the year, and then we kind of talk about it and get something that we can agree on, and look at the right cap rate and work on that.
If I could, if that's a motion, I'll second it.
I'd make it as a motion.
There was a motion, but it didn't have a second. Commissioner Duda made a motion to uphold the recommendation, there was no second on that. So that was I, for lack of a second. There is a motion by Commissioner Morgan to leave the value as-is, and seconded it by Commissioner Boyle.
Right.
Commissioner Kraft?
As-is, meaning taking the assessor's recommendation for this year, or where it was for the year before?
Where it was for the year before. Just at the same time, in having you as a representative and board member know that we'll work with you to look at the income and get the information, et cetera.
Commissioner, if I may, it was exempt the year before.
Oh, was it totally exempt?
This is the first year it hasn't been.
Okay.
I just want to clarify, my issue of bringing it, this up, or maybe having someone look at it for an additional week, was not to get a right answer or the answer that I want. It was because I feel Mr. Levy, at least from listening to you, brought up some information that you had not necessarily seen or taken into consideration, that would potentially have an impact on what the outcome of the value that we're setting would be. So what I was trying to do was, while you looked and did exactly what you were supposed to do at the information we gave you, there is additional information that was not presented at the time. So with the delay for the week is what really is all I wanted, was to have all the information laid out for you to review, and then come back in a week or whatever, to tell us whether or not that is still the correct information, or is it going to be a different value based on the information.
Can I amend my motion and see if it gets a second or a few votes? What I'd do is I'd amend it, and what I'm going to do is put the value at $160,000 would be the price that I'd put it at. And if you say, how did you arrive at that? I'm figuring that the two floors, ground floor and the top floor, at $4 a foot, triple-net, would come out to a 10 cap, meaning a 10% return if you bought it for $160,000. So I'm going to suggest that we put a value on it of $160,000, and then we gather some information as far as your lease rate, and I'd suggest to your group that you look at, how do we meter that separately, so that I'm not running a 24-hour utility bill and all kinds of things that you're paying all of that for out of my rent at too favorable a rent. And that would help you, and I'll be glad to do that free of charge to work with you, just as a volunteer. So I would make that motion of $160,000 assessment value.
And I'll second that, I think that's a good compromise.
Okay. Are there any other questions or suggestions? With that, do you have the correct motion? Please vote.
I might say one last thing. I know that we have someone that's going to be put on the planning board. Bill, if you might decide, just as a volunteer with myself, we could help look at this, that could be a good thing. Bill works for CB Richard Ellis, that'd be great. If you, you and I could do that, and try to be helpful in talking about the rent, and then we'll work at the numbers with Mr. Goodwilly and yourself.
I'll drive.
I already knew that.
I'll stay off the streets.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Please vote. Please note that the Douglas County Board of Corrections meeting will be held next Tuesday, January 15, 2013. We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
I actually think we're reconvening to be proper in form here. First item is minutes and claims. Item B, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, December 11, 2012. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, January 8. The complete listing is in the office of the county clerk comptroller or on the website. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
Second.
Questions or comments? Please vote. Consent agenda, there's a total of 17 items. We are, please note, scratching L2, so consent agenda, agenda items A through Q. Is there a motion to approve? Questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes.
We'll move to citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the Seeing none, we'll move to presentations. And if I could, I would ask the representatives from the Long Term Care Community Mal Health Center, Corrections, and 911 to come forward. This is a fun part of the agenda. As you know, the county participated in the 2012 Nebraska Courthouse Food Drive Challenge, which is a statewide challenge. And this was the fourth year that we have participated. And 16 counties altogether participated statewide in the competition, and including the NACO employees and MIPS employees in the Lincoln offices, and in Lincoln and Red Cloud. There were 13,625 food items that were collected by 3,201 employees statewide. The winner of the statewide food drive was Clay County this year, and they had 58 employees and collected 1,506 items, which broke down to 25.97 items per employee, which is pretty impressive. And second place went to Frontier, and third place went to Burt, so we want to congratulate them. Here at Douglas County, we had participation, again, great participation, I should say, by our offices and departments. We collected, as a county, 5,766 food items countywide. And we have, today are going to present the first, second, and third place departments. So the first-place winner went to the Douglas County Health Center, Long Term Care and Community Mal Health Center, John Sheehan and Jim Torville representing. Second place went to Corrections, with Director Foxhall being present. And the third went to 911, and Karen Green is here representing the 911, which I believe is your department that took you over the top?
Yep.
Your shift, I guess I should say, your shift, yes. So with that, we do have a certificate that you're able to take back and hang on each of your department's walls. And again, we want, as the board, to thank you for your participation. The Heart Ministry was the nonprofit that all of the food items went to, and they were so appreciative of the participation, or our gift to them of the food items that we collected. So thank you for participating. I know it's kind of getting to be somewhat of, what do I want to say, internal challenge among departments, which is kind of fun to watch. And I don't know if you wanted to say anything in regards, yeah, go ahead, come on forward.
My name's John Levy, and I'm the executive director of the Heart Ministry Center, and I just want to say, we appreciate more than you will ever know doing this food drive on our behalf. Every year, we provide over 75,000 acts of assistance to people in need. But more importantly, we want to help them address their underlying problems. So we look at providing basic needs, food, clothing, things like that, as a way to entice people in our center. So our center has a choice food pantry, meaning we actually let people pick out what they want to have. Really, two reasons for it. First, not everyone likes the same type of food, and just because you're in need doesn't mean you shouldn't have choices. And second reason is, is if you're picking out the food, it means you're going to spend more time at our center, so we have more time to talk with you. And by doing this food drive on our behalf, so many different types of food came into the center. So, you know, we're not looking for, you know, 100 cans of corn necessarily, we just need that one special item that makes that person feel special. So what the county did for us is a tremendous, tremendous help, and we really can't thank you enough for what you guys did. So thank you.
Well, thank you for being here, and again, we're very pleased to be able to participate. And if you guys will come forward to receive your certificates, Long Term Care Community Mal Health. And you each get one, so you can take them back to your departments and hang them on your walls. And Corrections? And 911?
Way to go.
Yeah, for sympathy. So again, thank you very much for all you did. You would think we're having some promotional today on Ortho West. We have two people here with these slings on from Ortho West. With that, we will move to committees, the first being the finance. Anything from Commissioner Duda or Commissioner Morgan on the finance committee?
No, I think, as stated, I think that hopefully it's set up for February 4, and that's going to be an important day at 1 o'clock concerning the report from our consultant on the health matter. So hopefully that date is set for February 4.
February 4, 1 o'clock. We are looking for Cox Cable to televise it, and if not televise it, at least tape it for us. I do believe we can get that- I do believe we can get that done, and it's going to be a very important meeting. Everybody is invited to come to the chambers here to attend.
And I think that meeting could easily go three hours, four hours, who knows?
Yes.
But appreciate that everyone can attend. I think we're all set now for that date. So again, I thank you, Commissioner Kraft, for giving it set up, and Mary Ann also. So we're good.
Okay. With that, we'll move to the next items under Community Services. Commissioner Duda, you have two items under your committee.
Yes, thank you. The first item is to fill a vacancy on the Douglas County Planning Commission, and we have, Bill Bowers has submitted an application and is willing to serve on the Planning Commission, and therefore I would move for his appointment.
I will second that.
Please vote. And Mr. Bowers is here with us today. If you wanted to stand and come forward and say anything, you're more than welcome to.
I'll show off your sling.
I'm just happy to spend $26 to advertise Mr. Hutton. Nice work here. It was interesting because I noticed on the list that they were charging 26, and then I got this sling, and I thought, well, that's interesting. I'm paying for the advertising. I thought I could turn it over, but as you can see, that doesn't work either. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be of service. Look forward to bringing some, something that's positive to the, to the Planning Commission because being in the real estate business for 25 years, I should have some input that will be positive for everyone, and I look forward to working with everyone here. I thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If I may, Bill, thank you very much for serving.
Then Commissioner Duda, you have one more?
The second item under Community Services is modification of the Visitor Improvement Fund Grant Award for Jocelyn Art Museum for last year. They are... Marco, do you want to tell us a little bit about what changed they're requesting there?
Marco C. Martin for County Administrator's Office. The Jocelyn actually came to us just requesting a change in the VIF fund usage. They're changing from one previously planned art collection, which they had some timing issues in obtaining it, to a new art collection. One they're obtaining from New York and the other they tried to obtain from Denver. So that's before you just...
This is not a change in the amount awarded, simply how it is to be used, and I would move for the approval.
Second. Commissioner Boyle?
I certainly support this, and the reason I'm speaking briefly is that I really am not comfortable choosing what kind of art is shown at a museum. I'd like us to offer organizations such as the Jocelyn Art Museum the ability to make these changes without scrutiny of a governmental body deciding what kind of art's going to be displayed. I just feel a little weird doing this. So I'm going to support it, but I think the Jocelyn ought to have the latitude to do this without coming and saying, "These are the paintings we're going to be bringing in." I just, it's kind of a, somehow an intrusion that I don't think we should be doing to them. So just a suggestion, maybe we can find a way to give them some latitude to use their own judgment instead of having seven art critics.
I think if I could, Commissioner Boyle, the reason that it was brought, I think we all agree with what you're saying, but through their application, they had actually submitted a different proposal. So this is basically approving their new amended proposal, not necessarily saying...
No, but maybe in the future, we can help them, you know, write their proposal in such a way that they don't have to come back and do this to us, do this again. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Was there a motion?
Yes.
Okay, please vote.
Motion passes.
We'll move to the Health and Human Services Committee. The one item under there is a resolution approving the Memorandum of Understanding and Knowledgeing Allegiant Creighton Health, Creighton University Medical Center's Service to the Indigent and their Commitment to Continue Providing Health Services to this Population. And Jeannie, I don't know if you want to come down and give just a briefing of what we're doing again? My Mike, hi Kevin.
Hi, I'm Jeannie McClure, and I do work in government affairs for Allegiant Creighton Health, and I have today with me Mike Hat, who is in the Finance Department at Allegiant, and Kevin Knuckles, who is the new administrator at the Creighton University Medical Center, which is now under Allegiant's purview. We are here to ask you, we were here, I think, in October, asking you for the same kind of signature on application for Bergen Mercy Medical Center to be eligible for 340B funds, and this is the same kind of thing only for Creighton University's Medical Center. So if you have any questions, or I can...
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, I do have a question. First, I'd like to congratulate you on the announcement that the World Herald made the other day regarding the heart centers and the high ranking you got in all three areas. That's quite commendable. The 340B fund, in the HMA report that, the draft that we are reading, it mentions that we should partner with somebody who is a 340B for the dispensing of medication. And we're going to be asking if we can figure out how it can be done at a later time to discuss that with you.
And Commissioner Borgensen and I have been talking a little bit about that and seeing where, what we can do and where that leads, and we will continue that, those discussions. We're happy to do whatever we can, whatever we're allowed to do.
Very good. Thank you.
In this agreement, there is, why you're coming before us is basically for us to, I guess, approve or say yes that you're going to continue your commitment to the community. And with Creighton, you taking the partnership with Creighton, there had been some rumors about the facility closing, and we're making a commitment now here for this, with this agreement. Can you kind of expand on that and tell us what the plans are? Are there plans to change what's happening at Creighton, or will it continue to be there to serve the community as it has for however many years it's been there?
Good morning. My name is Kevin Knuckles. I'm Chief Administrative Officer at Creighton University Medical Center, and thank you, first of all, for your service. Our plans, as we look to the future of Creighton University Medical Center, is, we're committed to continuing to serve the East Omaha community and the region, and, you know, certainly with healthcare reform, there's going to be likely changes that come forward in how we provide care. So, you know, as to the future, you know, there likely may be changes in how services are provided, but is there any specific plans? No, there is not.
And specifically, we wouldn't be coming asking you for 340B, this, we wouldn't be pursuing this application if there were any near-future plans to make a change at that facility.
Okay.
Because there are only, this 340B is specifically for Creighton University Medical Center.
Right.
And just like the one for Bergen was specifically for Bergen's hospital.
Okay. If, just, that leads to a question that if there were changes, then this is no, is there provisions in there for this to be null and void, or what, how does that happen? Does it come back where...
If there were no longer a hospital, if Bergen was no longer a hospital, then there would be no 340B funds going to that hospital.
It just goes away completely.
Right.
It's not, you don't come back and get a provision to, or an amendment to move them to one of your other... I suppose you could.
It is hospital-specific.
It is hospital-specific, okay. So you'd have to come back, if we were going to, just say, one of them closed and we were moving all those patients to a different location for service, we would have to come back and approve...
For whatever new facility it was.
Okay.
So, I mean, we have, we have 340B through Emmanuel.
Right.
We have 340B through Bergen and now through, and Mercy and Council of Health, so...
Okay, all right. Well, and I guess the only thing I would say is that with, you know, how the rumor mill goes, if there are plans, we would appreciate at least kind of a heads-up of what's going on with the facility and to the community, because again, that's a pretty important location for services for the poor and the indigent of our community.
Right, and we are committed to serving that area. I know I emailed you community benefits reports, but I can, this is the hard copy, and I think you might have already gotten them in the mail, but I can hand them out to you as well. Kind of shows, I don't know that these numbers include the numbers from Creighton University Medical Center, but I believe it's like, what, Kevin, do you know that, I talked to Beckle this morning, like 12%.
Correct. It's a very large percentage, certainly.
Wow, okay.
So of poor and indigent served and bad debt and get forgiven at Creighton University Medical Center.
Okay, all right, thanks. And I do look forward to continuing our discussions. I know it's a little tricky from the conversations we've had to be able for us to, what we're finding is we can't just have another MOU for us to be a part of your 340B, but your assistance and maybe having us apply for that 340B maybe is the route, is what I think we're finding to go down.
Right.
So we appreciate your assistance, and that would be something the board would have to ultimately talk about if we want to go down that road.
Yeah.
Okay? Any other questions or comments? Is...
Second. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you all for...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is the Human Resources. There's two items. Commissioner Kraft, you have...
Yes, the weekly, the weekly, hold on. The weekly civil service report is as presented, and Mary Ann, you have a legislative resolution.
Commissioner Boyle, did you have something before that?
I did. I'm looking at the civil service report, and there's some job audit requests here that I just want to bring out. One is for microfilm records manager, and also a title I'm not that familiar with, maybe I'm missing something, but Assistant County Manager. Do we have Assistant, is that a correct title? Do we have Assistant County?
Commissioner Rick Kubat's title is Assistant County Manager. I'm going to change that to Assistant County Administrator to act remarkably reflect our office.
Okay, that's good. I'm not totally off then. Okay, good.
Okay.
Thank you all very much. I do want to mention one of the persons who left, not to single, not to diminish the other two that have left, but out of Corrections, Don Fricki has retired, you know, and Don sent me a note and I sent him a reply which bounced, so I have to get back and test with. But I want to thank Don, even though he's not here, for his years and years of great service to the citizens of Douglas County at the Corrections Department. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. The agenda, oh, Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I figure since we're in the HR piece, I want to take the time to introduce to the board, if you haven't met, the county's new J.D.O. coordinator, Crystal Rhodes.
Oh, great.
Who says she started yesterday, and a lot of us are familiar with her, so she'll be working with us on that. And I do want to thank staff for the speediness in regards to this because of the conversation, and they really made a great effort to move this to and working with the stakeholder community. So I want to thank staff for the work.
Hello, I'm Crystal Rhodes. I know many of you. I've met the rest of you this morning. I started yesterday, so I am really just starting to get my hands around where this particular grant is and the initiative and all of the key players and the subcommittees, but I'm very excited, and if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Commissioner Boyle?
You know, I don't have a question, but when I saw that you were chosen, I just really, have to tell you, I was thrilled because I know of your work over the years and so many different efforts, and you're just absolutely, you know, the right, the right person for this job, and I'm so excited you're there, Crystal, so welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tusha?
I also have to agree with Mike on this. I think it's a perfect choice, and I am so pleased that you accepted and that you're on board and welcoming. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Have fun.
Have fun.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Crystal.
Welcome aboard. The legislative item is a resolution expressing the county board's support for the implementation of Medicaid expansion in the state of Nebraska. And there is going to be, well, let me back up. It has already been determined by the governor that he is not going to pursue Medicaid expansion, the Medicaid expansion. What that Medicaid expansion does is, for three years, that expansion is paid for at 100% by the federal government, and then by the year 2020, it goes down to a, paid for by the federal government at 90%. And so what we have done, tried to do statewide, is go around and say, how does this affect counties if this expansion does or doesn't take place? Well, you can imagine that in counties, especially large counties like Douglas, Lancaster, and Sarpy, where we have, obviously Douglas County being the largest in our general assistance, primary health care, our community male health, and of course, they're, depending on some federal changes, it could be, also impact our jails. So I have talked with Senator Norquist, and they're planning, him and Senator Campbell, to introduce very, at the very beginning of the legislation, legislature, Medicaid expansion, and they want to know where the counties stand on this. And so I'm bringing this forward for us to be the catalyst, to take a position on letting the state know where we stand on the Medicaid expansion program. We could, as Douglas County, potentially, the impact here could be in upwards to $4 million. We are currently working on very specific numbers, but we know off the top that 2.1 million is from our general assistance budget, and about 277,000 is from the community male health outpatient pharmaceuticals. There's, again, a little bit of federal legislation and regulation that has to change in order for us to be able to count our jail population and the impact it would have on them, but you can see just from those two areas, we could potentially have a help in, at the county level by this Medicaid expansion program, especially for three years. State can opt in at any time or opt out at any time. The date specifics, though, are those for the first three years. It's the 100%, and then by 2020, it goes to 90. So depending on when you go in, you don't start your three-year, you go in where you are on those dates. So I think, again, with property taxes being the looming way for us to get our revenue, and we don't see that changing, we are constantly trying to find ways to reduce our costs. This would reduce the reliance upon the property taxpayers to, if the county's providing these services. And so what I mean by that is that if the Medicaid program right now, I don't even think we take enough participation in that at the state level, but the way it is right now, there's a 60-40 split between the feds and the state for the Medicaid program. And say our general assistant clients right now that don't qualify for any of that, they, we're picking that up at 100% by the property taxpayers. If we participate in this Medicaid expansion program and they become eligible, which by looking at what their income guidelines are going to be, it would potentially be that full clientele that we serve, and now you're thinking, now you're looking at that 2.1 million plus being picked up by Medicaid rather than by the property taxpayers. And again, it would be picked up at 100% by the federal government for three years, and then it dwindles down to the 90% by 2020. So I think for Douglas County, one, being the largest county, for two, potentially having the largest impact on property taxes with this expansion and our services, that we should be the leader in taking a position on this issue and working with the state to say, yes, we want the state to pursue this and get some relief from the property taxpayers at the county levels. So...
Need a motion? I'll make that motion.
Second. Commissioner Kraft?
Thank you. Thank you, and I agree 100% with what you said. In addition, not only will it reduce the reliance on property tax, having adequate health care can keep somebody on their job or in their job. If you have a person earning minimum wage flipping hamburgers, and they get sick and they don't have a doctor, they can lose their job by missing too many days of work. If they have health care, they can continue in their job and not be reliant upon... If they have health care, they can continue in their job and not be reliant upon the welfare system. Yeah. I do believe that those fast food places and others that are firing people so they don't have to provide health insurance are doing society an injustice and the research has shown that their cost is minimal to participate. So this is something we should wholeheartedly endorse. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Please vote.
Madam Chair, if I may, for the record, just on the vote on claims and minutes and claims, the vote is actually six zero one. Commissioner Morgan abstaining, just for the record. Thank you.
Do we have need for an executive, we have need for an executive session for union negotiation and litigation?
So move.
Second. Commissioner Morgan.
Just before we go in, I just want to mention two quick things. One is on our legislative package, I want to be sure we're working on, and I'd be glad to try to help on that, that we are working on property where the county leases space, that that part of the property becomes tax exempt as far as paying property taxes, similar to what hospitals and other nonprofits have when they occupy a building. If someone has a question on the board or someone else, please ask, but I think we ought to work at that. We've talked about that before. Meaning, we lease property at triple net mounds, we're paying those real estate taxes, which we should be exempt from. And we only get about thirteen percent of that back when we're paying substantial, Jerry and I have talked about that sum. So that's one thing. The other thing is when we go into executive session and a legal matter, I think we can talk about legal matters in there concerning the county on possible lawsuits or whatever. Okay.
Commissioner Dootie, it looks like you wanted to-
Well, the owner has to be a qualifying entity for a property to be exempt. I mean, I'm not sure why we're getting into that conversation right now, but, I mean, if we lease space, the owner has to be an exempt entity for-
Right. The difficulty is this, you're leasing the property on a triple net basis, okay? So the owner could care less what the taxes are because you're paying the taxes if you're a tenant. When you lease a triple net property, you agree to pay the utilities, the insurance, whatever the owner's bills are, you're paying. For example, out on Hundred and Eighth or on Eighty-Fourth or wherever it might be, those are triple net leases at most retail centers. And when a nonprofit goes into those, for example, as a hospital nonprofit, that part of the property, if they're occupying thirty percent of it, becomes tax exempt.
I thought the owner had to be a nonprofit for the property to be exempt.
No.
Okay. All right.
So if you lease to a nonprofit, they can become a hospital tax exempt on that portion of the property that they're occupying. The other part of the property is, I understand that where there may be someone in there that's not a nonprofit, is paying the property taxes. It's something for us to look at. And Patrick, you'll recall, we talked about this, I think Rick Kubat was involved. So that's what, that's the only ones I'm talking about. Now, if we weren't on a triple net lease, then that's a different situation. Because, you know, it's in the rent.
Okay. With that, we will go into executive session. Can we vote?
Need to vote.
Oh, need to vote.
Let's vote.
Let's vote.
Second?
Second.
Yeah.
Motion passes.